Only two more after this. That nurse is like one of the longest, I feel like normally, like some of them go in, you know, a couple minutes.
Hi, everyone, and good morning. Welcome to our February HLC Town Hall. HLC stands for the Higher Learning Commission, and the Higher Learning Commission is Pima's major accrediting body. We work very closely with them, and periodically we assemble what is called an assurance argument that maintains our dialogue and contract with the HLC. And or, well, I guess our more informal contract, our our dialogue and our conversation with them in order to maintain accreditation. This is a regularly occurring evaluation. It's part of a normal process at our college and is a chance for us to really demonstrate the many ways that we shine and what a stellar institution we are among our community and for our students. I have a few rules that I'm going to read, and then I'm going to turn it over to our first team who's going to walk through federal compliance and what that means. These town hall sessions are a chance to give everyone, college employees, students, and community members insight into the report that we'll be sending to the Higher Learning Commission to show evidence that we are meeting expectations set in that dialogue and conversation. And we're really grateful for your interest in this process and caring and for your care and consideration for the education of our community and our students. We're especially appreciative of any feedback that you have for us about this process and our argument. In order to ensure the best experience for everyone, we will have some ways for you to provide feedback. If you leave feedback in Zoom, one of our moderators will read those questions at the end. And if you're in the audience here today, please raise your hand, and one of our one of our support folks will come around with some note cards for you to write your questions on. We would like to ask you to please place your questions in chat so that we can answer them. If we don't have time, or if your question is quite complex, we might need to follow up with you. So please just make sure that we have your contact information. And if we don't get to your question, we'll absolutely follow up with you after this section in order to proceed and make sure that your your thoughts and questions are addressed. If you have a specific question or concern or complaint, we might just need to meet outside of this space altogether. We absolutely welcome clarification questions. And if you have any evidence that comes up from your areas or programs as you're listening to these proceedings, and you're like, hey, this is great. I've got something that will really add to this argument. Please email the criterion team that's presenting with that evidence. We do want to maintain a timely session, so we're going to begin now. And I'm going to turn it over to the federal compliance team who's going to go through that criterion and let us know about what that criterion entails and what some of the evidence that we have for it. And without further ado, thank you very much, federal compliance team.
Thank you so much to our emcee, Elliot. Good morning. I am Melissa Stotter, Director of Additional Location Compliance.
I am Ari Clifford. I'm the Assistant Director of Title IV Compliance.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Maria Vasilova, the Program Manager for Strategy Institutional Research and Analytics.
So to get started, here we have the federal compliance overview. Federal compliance is required by our accrediting agency, the Higher Learning Commission, since it is a requirement for accrediting agencies to review these components to remain a valid accrediting body by the U.S. Department of Education. As Pima Community College receives Title IV program funding, so federal direct student loans and grant funds, such as the Pell Grant, the Federal Supplemental Educational Opportunity Grant, and the Work-Study Funding from the Department of Education, we are expected to comply with all of the federal regulations to continue to be eligible to offer federal financial aid to our students who complete a free application for federal student aid, commonly called the FAFSA. Institutions should be aware that the federal compliance peer review report concludes with a mandatory section that prompts the team to bring to HLC's attention any circumstance encountered during the course of their review that gives reason to believe that an institution is not fulfilling their Title IV or Higher Education Authority responsibilities, or if the institution has engaged in any fraud or abuse. There are several different teams working on different sections of the HLC Assurance Argument. And it's important to note that the federal compliance section actually crosses over with many of the following groups. So from this slide, you can see we're looking at the Assume Practices, and our core components tie in with Criterion Two, Three, and Five. It may be surprising to see that under federal compliance, we have things like teaching and learning sections, and ethical and responsible conduct come up over and over again. Those of us who work in federal compliance, we realize how the federal regulations really do span an entire college structure and are not limited to just one office. The HLC Assurance Argument gives a clear picture of that and how true that is, and that compliance is really everyone's responsibility at an institution.
PCC must demonstrate administrative capability to meet all the Title IV program requirements. What is Title IV? Title IV refers to the federal financial aid programs for post-secondary students authorized under the Title IV of the Higher Education Act of nineteen sixty-five as amended, and is administered by the U.S. Department of Education and listed in thirty-four CFR six-six-eight point one C. What is administrative capability? The concept of administrative capability broadly applies to both an institution's demonstrated compliance with the law and regulation and its capability to comply with by demonstrating adequate numbers of properly trained staff and by having formal institutional policies and procedures that cover the Title IV requirements throughout the institution. So how do we meet the Title IV requirements and demonstrate administrative capability? There are several areas in the HLC we'll look at to see how the institution complies. They will survey if we have documented and followed our policies and procedures. They will look for proof that we have systems in place that will show we have strong internal controls and consistency in our practices. But another aspect of this assessment is how do we communicate what we do to students and to the public? Is it clear? Is it available and easily accessible? This piece falls under consumer information, which you may be more familiar with as consumer protection regulations. When you look at the broad picture of Pima, we are meeting most of these criteria. However, there are some areas of concern that we will share and have shared with the administration. Some of those areas have to do with fraud and the investigation of fraud, and also the reporting of fraud, IT, security, infrastructure. But most of all, the lack of clear and updated college college policies and procedures.
So the HLC will also be looking at our assignment of credits, program length, and tuition. During this research, we did learn that all credit programs must be reported in this section, so not just the financial aid eligible programs. This would encompass everything from our non-standard term, dual enrollment, workforce, and traditional credit programs. All need to be documented and have the same consumer information available to the public. We found most of our supporting documentation for this section, but some areas that are still a work in progress include the following. The Provost's Office is still working to develop Pima's definition of an academic calendar in a new draft administrative procedure. We need to clarify that we're a semester-based institution and not trimester or quarter-based, and that summer is our trailer and not a header for the institution. Another item that's still in progress is our new draft administrative procedure for the definition of a credit hour. At this time, the draft AP has been reviewed by both the Academic Standards Committee and the Provost's Leadership Team, and has been forwarded to legal for review. Pima will be required to submit this administrative procedure to HLC prior to our reaffirmation visit as a part of the federal compliance filing. We also found credit offerings for the workforce area were initially notated in a separate catalog, and not all of the programs were listed on the website anywhere. The Workforce Division is currently working on having those credit programs added to future college catalogs and having the non-credit Fast Track program information published as well. However, we may still need further consumer information posted for some of these programs on the pima.edu website. And then lastly, we currently have no board policy that addresses tuition at the college and how the governing board votes on the rate each year to determine in-state, out-of-state, and differential tuition. We believe finance is working on a new draft policy to address this. Next, HLC is looking at our institutional records of student complaints. So this would include our institutional student complaint policy and procedure. So areas like the Office of Dispute Resolution, Title IX, our Student Complaint Resource Liaisons, HR, accessibility and disability resource complaints, all need to have documented policies and procedures in place. And we ideally should have a single system to track student issues. We currently have at least two systems, both Ethics Point and Simplicity, that are being utilized to gather student complaint information. Some of the areas that we still need further work on are to have the administrative procedure for student complaints updated. It's currently outside of the three-year review cycle. There was recently an ODR-directed training that was included by HR for all employees that went out in September this year. However, we do still have multiple complaint reporting forms at the institution and on the pima.edu website. So it's difficult for students to know what type of complaint they should be filing a report for. Lastly, we also could not find evidence that all of our student complaints are centralized into one database or system or reviewed on a regular interval to look for complaint trends. There is a new task force that is being developed that includes members of Student Affairs, HR, Legal, ODR, and STAR to work to address this.
The publication of transfer policy speaks to how PCC is assessing transfer credits, which can include accredited and non-accredited institutions, foreign institutions, and also from experimental or experiential learning and non-traditional adult learner programs. This ties nicely into the definition of credit of a credit at Pima discussion that we heard a few slides ago. The expectation is that we document our policy on accepting credits and also document the procedure on who is authorized to administer transfer credits. Consumer information is a key factor in this section of evidence. How are we communicating this information to the public, stakeholders, and to students? Is it on the website? Is it easily accessible? Who is responsible for keeping the information updated? The institution must demonstrate that it has transfer policies for all categories aforementioned and that the policies are publicly disclosed. The current concern in this area has to do with the programs that result in state licensure. For example, nursing or like teaching. All of the programs that result in in a licensure or a state licensure must be disclosed on the PCC website for all fifty states. We do not yet have this in place. We also have a concern that PCC's Articulation Agreement disclosure webpage is out of date, which is a requirement of this section. And there are outdated or a lack of college-wide policies and procedures to meet all the compliance requirements in this area. An institution offering distance education or correspondence education, as such terms may define be defined in federal regulations, shall have processes through which the institution establishes that the student who registered in the distance education or correspondence education courses or programs is the same student who participates in and completes and receives the academic credit. In verifying the identity of students who participates in the class or coursework, the institution might may make use of one or more methods at that at the option of the institution, which may include, but but may not be limited to, secure logins, pass codes, proctored examinations, new or other technologies and practices that are effective in verifying the identity of students. Fraud is a large issue that PCC is currently facing. We have bad actors entering our systems and our classrooms with intentions to somehow glean monetary gains, which can be financial aid or chargebacks or other types of benefits. There is quite a bit of work being done in this area college-wide because it has touched almost every part of our system in one way or another. There is a work group currently assessing third-party vendors to help us catch the bad actors before they can enter the system and take classes. The HLC will review all institutions' procedures and processes for ensuring the protection of student privacy during all comprehensive evaluations within the context of the criteria for accreditation. The AP three-point-one-oh-point-oh-three Student Identity Verification in Distance Learning, the new draft is done, however, it is not yet posted on the website. All institutions must maintain policies and procedures for ensuring the protection of student privacy. Such procedures and processes, including any methods related to student identity verification, must also implement reasonable and appropriate safeguards to protect student privacy. Financial aid administrators received a general notification from the Department of Education called Gen fifteen eighteen, where it explained protecting student explained in detail protecting of student information requirements and are reminded that under various state and federal laws and other authorities, including the HEA and FERPA, the Privacy Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended, the Graham-Leach-Biley Act, which is the GLBA, state data breach policies, privacy laws, and potentially other laws. They may be responsible for losses, fines, and penalties, including criminal penalties caused by data breaches. Because we have international students, we are also to comply with the GDP, the General Data Protection Regulation, which is because we may have students that are from European countries. So in this area, we are concerned sort of about the security data in AP AP nine-point-oh-one-point-oh-three. It does not specifically include the language necessary to meet the standard. AP nine-point-oh-one-point-oh-two addresses the data trustee relationship, and it also needs to define the owners of the data. PCC required began requiring online training for employees to learn about the cybersecurity threats. But we are unsure about how this infrastructure supports the adherence to third-party vendors who would also be included in this that the college uses. And also the frequency and the competency requirements. In the case of student records, the responsibly, in the case of student records, also the responsible party currently is the Office of the Provost. We have a concern in this area because the Office of Financial Aid and Scholarships, the International Office, the Registrar's Office, the Veterans Office, all do not report currently to the Provost.
I would like to add three points from the data steward's point of view, like our department. First, our student database for all the year PCC existed, school's banner has a confidentiality flag. Students with this flag do not authorize the information being shared, other for the legal and compliance purposes and respected. The second, all emails containing students or employees' personal information within and outside college are encrypted. And when institutional research receive a request for data containing personal identifiable information of students or employees, we do not release it without authorization of the register, who is this data steward. Publication of students' outcome data. We need to publish students' outcome data because it's a federal requirement, it's a state requirement, and it's a HLC requirement. And we publish students' data on outcomes like completion, enrollment, and retention. We publish all the federal reports like IPads, Solomon Amendment, and Equity and Athletics to quote on review. And we publish the Perkins Grant Reports, this is a state report. And all this is published by our department on the PCC website. Some reports are published like in very crude form, like we report them to the authorities, but for the public comprehension, because we also require to publish it so the community and public could understand and read the data. So we also publish it in the shape of interactive dashboards, very visual information, so everybody can, so it's not cryptic for the large public and for our constituents. And everybody can really know and understand what is going on. We also publish the outcomes of the programs that are accredited, because it's a requirement of the programs. And also, we publish it again for employment legislature requirements. And we will do it again because it will be enforced again starting starting this summer. We, so for the state authorization and accreditation, we share the results with the programs, with the state agency, with the federal agency, the same way. We still have a task to accomplish. Because when we report, when we report to the agencies our outcome, and they have our, for example, our students that pass the bar exams or nursing exams or welding exams, and they do not share automatically the information with us. And it's very important for us to know how our students are doing after after they graduated or after they achieved their learning results with us. So we will work on the sharing of the information of the feedback from the agencies back to us. This is a next task to achieve. For the rest, we we are updating the standard operation procedures. It's the work in in progress. And we we publish and we share everything we are supposed to do with the state, federals, and other accrediting agencies.
HLC is committed to promoting fundamental fairness and transparency in its institution's dealings as it pertains to all aspects of the enrollment process. For purposes of this policy, it includes lead generation, recruiting activities, admissions processing through matriculation, and related practices such as financial determinations and administration. This expectation applies comprehensively to prospective students and, to the extent applicable, current students referred to collectively in this policy as students. In addition to the requirements set forth in other HLC policies, HLC may look into allegations of violence of this from violations of this policy and or any other HLC requirement designed to promote consumer protection through an evaluation visit through its complaint process or through any other appropriate mechanism. Borrow defense claims are being received by institutions across the United States, which are primarily based on incorrect information provided by the institution to the students. So HLC has established the following expectations for member institutions. All institutional recruiting, admissions, financial aid personnel have appropriate education, job titles, and skills for their role that they are overseen by the institution, which enforces a formal code of conduct for all such personnel. And the institution who also oversees any third-party contractors who will provide recruiting, admissions, financial aid services, and assures any of the personnel who work with students in their similar education skills experience as personnel employed by the institution. We have an area concerned here because we are unclear, and it is undocumented how third-party vendors are actually trained or and also QA QC'd afterwards to see if these policies are being enforced.
Okay, and to close our next steps, the federal compliance team is currently working on our HLC federal compliance draft and updating it after taking into account all of the feedback and comments from the public posting period. We're also continuing to work with college leadership, the other criterion and assume practice teams to ensure that processes are put into place and that key stakeholders across the college are involved. We will continue to have monthly town hall events at various times and locations, and we encourage you all to participate or to provide additional evidence for any of these areas that you may have. And at this time, we will take any questions.
We have one question.
The question is, I attended in August 2023, and I noticed that many of the missing data reports on VP AP that was mentioned in that federal compliance session are still here. How do we get those completed? I might have read that wrong. I believe that the question is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that, that the, that there were missing reports and BPs and Ap's that need to be updated? Is there an update on those updates?
Yes, so there are several different working groups working on those. I believe that there is an administrator assigned to each BP or AP and have a review date to provide to the chancellor's office. So they are tracking that, and they are getting regular email reminders. I believe the final due date is the end of April, that they're supposed to have those due to the chancellor's office. So we are hoping to have those updated as soon as possible. And if there are any outstanding at that time, we would most likely want to notify administrators to have those move forward.
I would also just like to comment that actually the Ap's and BP's are evidence, they're direct evidence for the federal compliance filing, so they must be completed before we actually do the federal compliance filing. So we did get a host of things to review, a week and a half, two weeks ago, that on the 14-day, it must be finishing up now, and those should be posted on the website once the comments are taken into consideration. But I agree with Melissa, like we would not get those posted. It would be on behalf of the college and the administrators that oversee those areas.
I think that's it for questions. Thank you so much, federal compliance team, for all your work.
Here we are in the next session of our Town Hall with Criterion Five. I'm joined with the guests here, and I have Carrie Hill, Nick Richman, and Elliott Mead. My name is Denise Riley, and I'll be your emcee for this session. Town Hall sessions are intended to give members of the community, both internal and external, insight into the report that will be sent to the Higher Learning Commission to show evidence that Pima Community College is meeting expectations set for any institution accredited by the Higher Learning Commission, or HLC. We thank you for your interest in this process and caring about the education of our community by attending these sessions and providing your feedback. In order to ensure the best Town Hall experience, allowing presenters to answer questions as well as receive your valuable input, we would like to establish the following expectations. Online attendees, please place your questions in the chat so our moderator can read them to the presenters. In-person attendees, please write your questions on the note cards provided, and one of our team members will collect them for you. Please reserve this time for questions that are related to the presented topic and criterion. If you have a specific situation, concern, or complaint, moderators may help you address it outside of this meeting space. Clarification questions are definitely welcome. Please email the Criterion team to discuss any evidence you have if after listening to the session, you recognize that there's some input that's valuable that can be a valuable contribution to the group. So we'll begin with our first presenter, Elliott Mead.
Thanks, everyone, and welcome to our Town Hall. I'm going to get started by covering a couple notes about the Higher Learning Commission and the assurance argument overall, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the Criterion Five A, what that means and what evidence we've acquired for it so far before I turn it over to my colleagues. And then we'll do introductions as we go through each speaker. Too many buttons. Okay, so the Higher Learning Commission, I mentioned earlier, is part of a dialogue that we establish with our accreditors, and there are a number of components to it. We heard earlier from our federal compliance team, there are five core criteria, as well as federal compliance and assumed practices. Next slide. For our assurance argument, we want to not only create an argument, but like any good academic argument, we need to have evidence to back it up. We can't just say we're awesome, right? We have to demonstrate how awesome we are. So in this process, we look to acquire multiple kinds of evidence. We want to stick with clear. We want all of the majority of our evidence to be clear, precise, and explicit, that directly supports the points that we're making. However, throughout our argument, you might note that we also use cooperating and circumstantial evidence to back up our points and really unfold and bring out the richness and wholeness of the work that we're doing. So there are multiple kinds of evidence that go into our report, and that report altogether is made up of a number of different chapters that comes under the kind of entire argument, meaning how we comes down to how we support our students and how we live up to the expectations that we set for ourselves. Next slide, please. Criterion Five itself, right, one of the five components is broken down into three subcomponents. Those are, as all of the core criteria are. So Five A covers administrative structures and collaborative processes. Five B covers the educational offerings and our plans for maintaining and strengthening those offerings in the future. And Five C covers the systematic and integrated planning of our college for improvement. As I mentioned, there are assumed practices for the entire assurance argument. Some of them are really more coalescing around Criteria Five. Assumed practices are just things that are assumed to be facts across all institutions, and we are expected to be compliant with them at all times. Some of the assumed practices for Criterion Five include financial health and planning, data management, audit and oversight, and administrative structure. So again, these are all things that we don't necessarily have to write about that we have in our assurance argument, but when our visit, when folks come to do the site visits, we'll provide evidence we have all of these things in place. And now Five A. I mentioned that Five A is about our administrative structures and collaborative processes. The argument that we create demonstrates that through our administrative structures and processes, our institution's leadership demonstrates its effectiveness and enables the institution to fulfill its mission. Some of the components of that include, of course, our shared governance, which is the core of how we operate. So evidence for our shared governance at Pima includes our faculty senate, staff council, all college council, and AERC. This also includes the BP and AP development and revision process, college committee structure, and strategic planning process. Core criteria Five A two includes that the institution's administration uses data to reach informed decisions in the best interest of its institution and constituents. Many components of the argument, as you might expect, do ask us and have us look at how we use data as evidence. These are institutional processes and include things like data widely available through Pima reports and Webby, through the FACT process for allocating faculty positions, within our mission fulfillment framework, within the class and comp study based that we looked at our salary structures and our market rates for our positions, and we also use data to reach informed decisions about course scheduling. And then finally, for Five A three, the last core criteria is that our institution's administration ensures that faculty and when appropriate staff and students are involved in studying academic requirements, policy, and processes through effective collaborative structures. That word collaborative comes up a lot, right? So what kinds of evidence we use to demonstrate that we are a collaborative data-using institution who makes decisions on these topics? Is those evidences include our curriculum approval processes through our DFCs, our disciplined faculty committees, through College Curriculum Council, and the General Education Committee. There are also collaborative processes and structures in place in our current and ongoing general education redesign as part of the AJAC changes coming from our state, and as well as our BP and AP development and revision process, which has been a collaborative endeavor. And now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Carrie, who's going to go through Five B.
Hi, good morning. My name is Carrie Hill. I'm in the Finance and Administration office, and I'm going to walk you through Five B. So Five B is the institution's resource-based supports its educational offerings and its plans for maintaining and strengthening their quality in the future. And there are elements of finance across the assurance argument, not just in Criterion Five, but here's where we'll really focus on that. Next slide, please. So for Five B one, the institution has qualified and trained operational staff and infrastructure sufficient to support its operations wherever and however programs are delivered. So some of the evidence we're going to look at here is related to how we demonstrate that we have qualified and trained staff. We have, as Elliott already mentioned, recently completed a classification and compensation study where we've updated job descriptions and the minimum qualifications associated with them. We have college-directed training and opportunities for learning through the Teaching and Learning Center, and also our OED department can help customize training to make sure we have employees getting the right skill sets they need to be efficient and effective in their jobs. And there's an employee evaluation process that happens annually. Another area we can talk about here is our infrastructure. So the educational and facilities master plans have led to a major investment in the infrastructure of the college, so not just our facilities, but also our information technology and how that supports the education that we offer to our students. Here we can talk about capital planning, lifecycle, and deferred maintenance, because with these new facilities, we have ongoing commitments. And here we can also talk about the support Pima Online provides for our online courses, the Center for Learning Technology and High Flex classrooms, which we started implementing as a result of the pandemic and the federal grant funds we received through the Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds. For Five B two, the goal's incorporated into the mission and any related statements are realistic in light of the institution's organization, resources, and opportunities. So some of the evidence we can point to here is our mission fulfillment framework, the strategic plan, and the mid-cycle review, and as many of you might be aware, to help make sure we complete our strategic plan tasks, we've continued that for an additional year. And this is also where we can talk about the new project portfolio and management office, which is really going to help us look at the capacity of our institution to implement various projects as we fulfill our priorities, and that's also going to help strengthen the link between different functional areas to make sure we're doing this to the best of our abilities. For Five B three, the institution has a well-developed process in place for budgeting and monitoring its finances. Evidence we can talk about here is our annual budget development process. So as Elliott mentioned earlier, there's assumed practices, and one of those is that we have a chief financial officer, and that is the office that oversees these activities. We can also talk about the college's organizational structure, where when we reorganized several years ago, we have central departments, not just for academics, but on our business and other operational activities that are overseen by people who are responsible for budget management, leading the effective operations, and the personnel that are associated with their departments. We have an annual budget development calendar that's put together and a budget forecast that's provided to kick off the start of the development for the budget each year. Also, for any requests that happen outside of our annual budget cycle, there's the strategic initiative request process, so we can allocate funds throughout the year as new initiatives arise. And as far as monitoring, we can talk about our financial ratios and our credit ratings. So we have revenue bonds to fulfill some of our Center of Excellence projects, and we want to make sure we are in good standing with the ratings agencies. We recently issued our annual comprehensive financial report, which summarizes the previous year's fiscal activities. We have various budget tools that are available to budget managers in different areas of the college, and also we have regular reports that go to the governing board and the Finance and Audit Committee, both monthly financials and then on capital expenditures. And lastly, we have Five B four, the institution's fiscal allocations ensure that its educational purposes are achieved. Evidence we have here is that the annual budget development process is really driven by the college's integrated planning framework, and Nick will talk about that a little bit more in just a minute. As I already mentioned, we have revenue bonds. A newer group that was implemented in recent years was the Program Recommendations Team to facilitate some aspects of the program review process. We can talk about our grant programs that we have that provide innovative opportunities for students that our resource base might not currently allow for, and the work of the Pima Foundation as it provides not just scholarships, but is looking at what kind of capital investments and other sustaining funding they can provide to support the college. And with that, we will go to Five C, and Nick Richman. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. And my name is Nick Richman. I'm with the College's Strategy Analytics and Research Team, and I'm going to be giving you an overview of some of the evidence we have as it relates to Five C, that the institution engages in systematic, integrated planning and improvement. So if we go to the next slide, please. I have to guess a little bit wrong the right slides because I can't currently see them. So I'm going to hope you're looking at a slide that is about Five C one. And here, the HLC is looking for evidence that we allocate our resources in alignment with our mission and priorities. Now, we have a few different areas of evidence we can point to here. So firstly, the strategic plan is considered as part of the annual budget development process. And also, there were a number of examples we can provide where we have reallocated resources from an area of lower need to an area of higher need. For example, repurposing funds that were used to publish career focus and instead using that to recruits, student recruiters, or higher student recruiters. If we go to the next one, please. For Five C two, we need to demonstrate that we link our processes for the assessment of student learning, evaluation of operations, planning, and budgeting. Now, there are a number of examples provided on the slide here, but the one I'll highlight for today is the data-informed decision that was made by the institution to provide free student support courses. This is a really good example of where the data clearly showed that students who take these classes persist at a higher rate and are more successful, and so the college made the decision to provide those courses for free, which shows a strong link between our focus on student or learner success and budget decisions that would support that. If we go to the next slide, please. For Five C three, the HLC is looking for evidence that our planning process includes the institution as a whole, and includes the perspectives of both internal and external constituent groups. Now, among the evidence we have here is the strategic planning team. For that group, they're the key internal group for the development of the draft strategic plan that then moves forward for leadership and governing board review. That group is built on a stakeholder model, borrowing from one of the national planning models for higher education. So we have specific representatives from specific areas of the institution, so we can ensure that all key internal stakeholder groups are directly engaged in the planning process. We also, during full planning cycles, have open forums to give opportunities for employees, and when possible, we open those to community members as well to give their input into the ideas. As an example, we're in a kind of a mini planning process right now, extending the existing plan by an additional year, and we actually have some sessions coming up where employees will be able to give their input on priorities for the college in the upcoming two years. We also have an annual futures conference event. This is intended to be primarily focused on community members so that we can have that conversation with the community we serve about their priorities for the institution. The next one of those is coming up on March the eighth, and I encourage anybody who hasn't responded to please engage with that event. If you need information about RSVP, please contact me. My email will be on the last slide. If we go to the next slide, please. So for Five C four, the HLC is looking to ensure that we plan on the basis of a sound understanding of our current capacity. There are a few different things here that we can demonstrate to the HLC that show how we're doing this. So for example, each fall, the chief financial officer shares projected changes in revenue, expenditures, enrollment with the executive leadership team. Finance also monitors a range of different indicators to give us a sense of what's going on in the key environment as it relates to enrollment, for example, and revenue. The strategic planning process also considers longitudinal trend data to try and understand where things have been for the institution and to think through where they might be going, so we can take that into account as we develop the draft recommendations for the priorities for the next few years. If we go to the next slide, please. So under Five C four, we need to demonstrate that we're anticipating external factors that could impact the institution. We do this in a few different ways. For example, during each strategic planning cycle, we will always consider an updated environmental scan, which looks at the environment around the institution in which we operate, and also a competitor analysis that looks at other education institutions with whom we are competing in the local environment. They may be local institutions, or they may be institutions with a strong online presence that are very accessible to students in Pima County. So that's a key area that we think about. We also monitor the surrounding world for any kind of signs of small changes or bigger changes that may impact the institution. A good example for this also is the 2023 Futures Conference, where we had attendees specifically talk about the future of technology, the future of Pima learner, and other very future-focused topics to help the college gain their insights to inform our planning process. to help the college gain their insights to inform our planning process. If we go to the next slide, please. So the last item here that we're required to write to for 5C is that the institution implements its plans to improve its operations and student outcomes. So we have developed over the last couple of years a much more robust way to keep track of the status of the strategic plan. So we have open, public-facing dashboards that show the status of those. We have regular updates to key internal groups as well to help support any project that might be falling behind and to give visibility to the work that's being done. We have two open sessions coming up about that in the middle of March. We also have an institutional quality program, which is specifically focused on improving our operational effectiveness. Over the last few years, that's included each unit developing a unit plan. We've been focused on process mapping and also project management is a theme for this year. We've also very recently formed a new group who was specifically going to come together from across different units to try and work together to identify ways we can improve the effectiveness of the institution. Next slide, please. So that's really about where we're at right now. The draft of Criterion 5 has been reviewed by the external consultant that we have supporting the HLC work to very positive feedback. So we are pretty confident we're in a good place with Criterion 5. We would however encourage any of you who have evidence, ideas, to please reach out. Our emails are listed here. Michael was unable to attend today due to a scheduling conflict, but he's also a very active member of the Criterion 5 team. But you can reach out to any one of us if you have input you'd like to share. And with that, we would be happy to take any questions.
At this time, I'd just like to remind everyone that's in person to sign the attendance records. So the question reads, if asked about our enrollment and space utilization, how will we answer that? So I'm not sure which member of the team wants to take this one. Once again, if asked about our enrollment and space utilization, how will we answer that?
I can speak to that one a little bit. So enrollment, we've tracked for a long time. We have trend data. We know unfortunately, the reality of our enrollment numbers is that we're about roughly 50% of the headcount that we were back in our high, which was fall 2010. As it relates to our space use, we have a number of reports that have been generated recently to look at utilization of spaces. That's partly from a classroom point of view. But we've also very recently done an analysis of, for example, district office with the attention of, well, if we want to, I mean, there's a reality we need to recognize, right? Do we need all of the space we currently have? And examples that are being considered, do we lease out space that's available? Be that one of the campuses, be it a district office. Those things are under active discussion now. So I think because we're thinking about those trends, because we're being mindful of options about how we might use our space, and we're going to link those things into our next comprehensive planning process that launches in September, October time in the fall, we can use that to demonstrate that the college is having a conversation about these challenges. What do we need to do and what does the future need to look like? And I think that planning work is one of the key ways we could respond to such a question from the HLC.
Thank you so much, Nick. As we see if there's any other questions in the audience or in the chat, I just want to remind you that this is a comprehensive evaluation, part of the normal process as far as accreditation for Pima Community College. The town halls will occur once a month through April 2024, rotating days of the week, location and times. We do have, and I want to thank my colleagues here, Elliot and Carrie and Nick for sharing their expertise. But we do have a team of over 35 faculty, staff and administrators. And many of them will be here today, sharing the criteria they're working on and what's been accomplished to date. So that's my filler to see if we have any other questions coming in. Okay, at this time, we don't have any other questions. Do we have anything else that our presenters need to share? Okay, I want to thank the colleagues so much for Criterion 5. That's Elliot and Carrie and Nick. And of course, Michael Parker not here, but thank him for that work as well. Thank you so much, and I think this is time for a break.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Town Hall session on Criterion One. Town Hall sessions are intended to give members of the community, both internal and external, insight into the report that will be sent to the Higher Learning Commission to show evidence that Pima Community College is meeting expectations set for any institution accredited by the Higher Learning Commission, or HLC. We thank you for your interest in this process and caring about the education of our community by attending these sessions and providing your feedback. In order to ensure the best Town Hall experience, allowing presenters to answer questions as well as receive your valuable input, we would like to establish the following expectations. First, online attendees, please place your questions in the chat so that our moderator can read them to presenters. In-person attendees, please write your questions on the provided note cards and one of our team members will collect them from you. Please reserve this time for questions that are related to the presented topic and criterion. If you have a specific question, concern, or complaint, the moderator will address it outside of this meeting space. Clarification questions are welcome. Please email the Criterion team to discuss any evidence you have. And with that, we will start with our first presenter.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here today to hear an update about Criterion One. If we can please switch to the slides for that, that would be great. So my name is Nick Richmond. I am Pima's Vice Chancellor for Strategy Analytics and Research, and I'll be introducing Criterion One and the first of the core components. So within Criterion One, we're all focused on the mission of the institution. And the HLC want to ensure the mission is clear and articulated publicly and it guides the institution's operations. There are three core components within Criterion One, excuse me, and we'll work our way through each of those during the session over the course of the next thirty minutes. So next slide, please. The first of the core components we'll look at is that the institution's mission is articulated publicly and operationalized throughout the institution. We go to the next slide, please. So there are five different statements that we write to for Criterion 1A or Core Component 1A, I should say. The first is that the mission was developed through a process suited to the context of the institution. For us, the draft statements are developed through the Strategic Planning Team. This is a group developed through a stakeholder approach where we ensure we have representation from key internal groups. It's also co-chaired, I would note, by a faculty member to ensure that their academic voice is strong through the process. And then through the course of conversations by the Strategic Planning Team or SBT, we also gather input from internal and external groups via forums, surveys, and also the Futures Conference, which in a mission review year, the Futures Conference focuses on the mission of the institution. In other years, it focuses on the strategic plan and other topics. As a quick note, we have the next Futures Conference coming up on March the eighth. If you're available, I encourage all of you to attend that. At the moment, we have about a hundred community members who've RSVP'd and a similar number of employees as well. The current mission framework was drafted by the Strategic Planning Team and was forwarded to the governing board for review and input, and it was ultimately improved in spring of 2021. Something I would note for the most recent review, we took steps to ensure we engaged with interested community members about the review of the mission, and we got some really, really valuable feedback. And I will identify one specific change that came about from that input on the next slide. So if we go to the next slide, please. So the mission statements are displayed on our website. So here you see the purpose, vision, and mission. There are also behaviors as part of this. And the highlight I would mention is the purpose statement, where we have transforming lives through affordable education. The community members raised the very important point that we did not mention affordability anywhere in the draft statements, and it was added to the purpose statement. And that's really important because we know for the community we serve affordability is critical. And so it was a really valuable change made directly as a result of community input. And you can also see other key things in the statements here that we are an open admissions institution, that we serve the diverse setting of Pima County, and then we provide comprehensive and flexible lifelong learning opportunities. And those all relate to some of the upcoming statements we'll talk about, so I wanted to highlight those. Next slide, please. In 1A2, the HLC is looking for evidence that the mission and related statements are current and reference the institution's emphasis on various aspects of its mission. So some of that I highlighted on the previous slide. And as I also mentioned, the mission was mostly recently reviewed in spring of 21, which was just before the new strategic plan came online. And we will be reviewing the mission starting next year in anticipation of the next comprehensive planning process. So example evidence, a focus on affordable education, as already mentioned and highlighted in my previous comments. And then also, we have achieved sixty Pima County. Now, this is one of the goals that we established within our strategic plan, which is one of the related documents that very closely accompanies the mission of the college. Achieve sixty specifies that by 2030, sixty percent of Pima County residents aged twenty-five to sixty-four will hold some kind of credential or degree. And this is in alignment with the statewide effort, but it kind of brings focus to our goal to raise the educational attainment level within the community that we serve. If we go to the next slide, please. So the third of the statements looks for evidence that the mission and related statements identify the nature, scope, and intended constituents of the higher education offerings and services that we provide. So our mission directly connects us to the community we serve. It specifies that we exist to meet the educational needs of the diverse setting of Pima County. While we have some students who are from outside of that area, the vast majority are from Pima County, and that's our central focus. We also specify we provide comprehensive and flexible lifelong learning opportunities. Also through the mission and related statements, we focus on diversity. That includes in the statements, but we also have institutional target two from the strategic plan, which is relevant here. If we go to the next slide, please. We know when we look at U.S. Census Bureau data that if we look at the proportion of residents by race, ethnicity, who hold an associate degree or higher, that there are significant differences across race, ethnicity groups in the community we serve. You can see some of that information here where we have, for example, our white residents, fifty-point-five percent of those, based on this specific year's data from the Census Bureau, hold an associate degree or higher. It is notably lower for some other populations. For example, American Indian or Alaskan native at fifteen-point-six percent and Hispanic or Latino at twenty-two-point-seven percent. As a result of this, we adopted Institutional Target Two, which focuses specifically on doubling the completed numbers of learners in three of the race, ethnicity groups that we serve. If we go to the next slide, please. For 1A4, we need to demonstrate that our academic offerings, student support services, and enrollment profile are consistent with our stated mission. Now, there are a few things here we can highlight. So I already mentioned a couple times, in our mission, we focus, we specify that we provide comprehensive offerings, academic offerings. And we provide, for example, transfer pathways, workforce pathways, adult education, the newer fast-track offerings. We have a variety of offerings intended to meet the needs of the community we serve. Our student support services abroad, they include advising, counseling, the food bank, and more. And those are things that are covered in more detail in one of the other criteria. And we also can demonstrate that we have an institutional focus on populations that are important within Pima County based on census data. This includes the veteran population with the airbase here in town. Also, low-income earners, learners, which is really important based on the poverty rate within the community we serve. And for this one, we are also gathering some final pieces of evidence related to the work we do as a Hispanic-serving institution, which is also critical within 1A4. Go to the next one, please. So in this last one, in 1A, the institution clearly articulates its mission through public information, et cetera. Our mission statements are posted to the website. They're incorporated into marketing materials as appropriate. There are new posters that have been made, which are available for display across our sites. And then the last one mentioned here is that our regular governing board meetings, at which we had one yesterday, the board included an agenda item where we have a mission moment highlighting a student or program that exemplifies the mission of the institution. So go to the next slide, please. So that gives you a summary of where we're at with Core Component 1A. Now, we've been pausing in Criterion One for questions after each one, but in the interest of time today, I think we'll move forward onto 1B and then we'll take questions all in one go at the end. And so for this, I'll hand you over to my colleague, Paul Schwalbach, who'll speak about 1B.
Hi, my name is Paul Schwalbach. I'm the Director of Marketing and Communications at Pima, and I'm here to talk about 1B, the public good. So let's get started with 1B1. Our educational role is to serve the public. First things first, to serve the public, you need to know who your public is. Pima serves a wide variety of diverse audiences. Some come to us to seek bachelor's degrees. Others come to us to obtain or enhance their skills so they can get a job or move up at their job. We understand that one in seven Pima County adults lacks a high school diploma. They have far different needs and expectations from Pima. Tucson's poverty rate in 2021 was fifteen-point-one percent, placing us tenth out of twelve Western metropolitan statistical areas. Nearly half of Tuconans work in low-wage jobs. These realities drive our initiatives. We offer our constituents a wide variety of programs, one-hundred-plus credit and degree and certificate programs, the Arizona General Education Curriculum, which transfers smoothly to our state universities. As you've heard, Pima Fast Track, whose audience is what is being called the new majority learner, older, more likely to become from a community of color and struggling to gain a foothold on the economic ladder. We offer IBEST, which allows learners to earn a career in technical education certificate while preparing to take the GED. We have non-credit opportunities resulting from our collaborations with our community partners, such as the Community Health Worker Initiative in conjunction with El Rio. Moreover, we recognize the financial challenges facing many Tucson residents, so we keep tuition low. We seek out grants that benefit disadvantaged constituents. We offer open educational resources, which are low- or no-cost textbooks that remove a barrier for attendance for our learners. In all of these initiatives, you can hear the echo of what Nick talked about regarding our mission. Our role is to serve the public, empower every learner, every day, for every goal. We're all about the education of our community. We are not about enriching ourselves, or as the HLC puts it, a superordinate entity, which leads right into 1B2, educational autonomy. We're not for profit. We don't have shareholders. We don't have investors. We do not send money back to corporate headquarters. We do not have a corporate headquarters. In fact, there's no Arizona Community College equivalent of the Board of Regents that oversees UA, ASU, and NAU. No one is the boss of us but us, with the Pima Community College Governing Board at the top. Clearly, we work with regulators, the HLC, the Department of Education, and we belong to a wide variety of organizations. For example, the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities, the American Association of Community Colleges. But that's peer review, oversight, consultation, collaboration. Our affiliations help us continue to fulfill our mission, but none of these groups can change our mission. Now, we'll talk about 1B3, engaging with external constituencies. That's a nice photo. It's from STEAM Family Night, held at Northwest Campus in spring 2023. Families oohed and aahed at science experiments and demonstrations and heard about different scientific disciplines. A pleasant time was had by all. Folks were engaged. The event wasn't meant to sell anyone anything. The only thing we were promoting was the promise of education. The event was an example of responsiveness, as mentioned by the HLC in 1B3. Now, the word responsiveness is defined as the quality of reacting quickly and positively. So we respond positively in a variety of ways. We inform, and these Town Halls are a good example. We tell the public what we're doing. We engage. STEAM Family Night is one of many events we hold in our campuses and facilities. In February '23 alone, we sponsored more than thirty events that brought six thousand of our neighbors to our campuses. We consult. Each career in technical education program, each trade taught at Pima, is supported by a business and industry advisory committee. Each BIAC includes faculty, staff, administrators, and members of the specific industry. For example, at the Welding and Fabrication BIAC meeting, the group talks about trends in technology, in employment, and new equipment coming to the industry that students would need to learn. This slide is of a panel discussion at a discovery meeting for our coming Center of Excellence in Science and Engineering at Northwest Campus. The panel consisted of local STEM business and industry leaders, folks from the U of A, and other STEM educators. They talked about the needs, expectations, concerns, and hopes surrounding the new Center of Excellence. The discovery meeting was more than a discussion, though. It was a collaboration. That day featured some pretty sophisticated computer-assisted collection of data. The dozens of UA and Pima faculty and members of the real-world STEM community discussed ideas regarding the new center's curriculum, facilities, and equipment. And we're going to take those ideas and incorporate them so that we may serve the community in the best way possible. As you've heard about our Fast Track program, that is another example of collaboration. We offer these short-term programs in IT, medical billing and coding, the trades, and other disciplines. Their curriculum has been created hand-in-hand with local employers because the point of Fast Track is to get folks good jobs quickly. And it all goes back to the idea of responsiveness and to being a good citizen, reacting positively and quickly. And I guess we're going right to 1C?
Yeah, let's do that, Paula, then. We'll take questions at the end. All right, great. So normally, at this point, you would hear from math faculty member Taugh Sutton, who is the lead for Criterion One.
who is the lead for criteria in one C. Unfortunately, he's unavailable due to his teaching commitments, so I'll just summarize this one briefly today. So for one C, the H L C is looking for evidence that we provide opportunities for civic engagement in a diverse multicultural society and globally connected world, as appropriate within the mission and for the constituents we serve. If we go to the next slide, please. For one C one, they're looking for evidence that we encourage co-curricular and curricular activities that prepare students for informed citizenship and workplace success. Now, there are a couple of things we speak to in one C one for this, including, for example, the Student Leadership Institute and the Career Cafe. Because this is really discussed in four, in full, in criteria and four. So I won't talk about this one, but I'm sure it'll be covered a little bit later when criteria and four provide their update. If we go to the next slide, please. For one C two, they're looking for evidence that our processes and activities demonstrate inclusive and equitable treatment of diverse populations. Among the evidence we have here, social justice and equity are part of our mission behaviors. So it's specifically outlined that we expect our employees to commit to equity and social justice. And those behaviors are directly incorporated into the annual employee performance review process. So we can have that conversation each year between employees and their supervisors about this critical topic. We've also conducted an assessment of our culture from a D E I perspective. This was done by an external company a few years ago. We are in the process this semester of conducting a new assessment of the culture of the institution, specifically focused on employees using a national instrument called Viewfinder, which will be coming up actually in the next month or so, something like that. And then lastly, social justice and identifying high impact strategies to support diverse learners is a priority this year. Brian Stewart is leading a team, a college wide team, to identify priorities in this space. And that team will come together with a strategic planning team to identify priorities for twenty twenty four through twenty twenty six that weaves D E I priorities into the strategic plan. Next slide, please. The last of the subcomponents here is that the institution fosters a climate of respect among all students, faculty, staff and administrators from a range of diverse backgrounds, ideas and perspectives. Now, for a lot of this, we speak about the events that are run through, initially the diversity office led by Elder Ladner, and more recently, the work that Brian Stewart is leading with different kinds of events and speakers and programming related to different diverse populations. We also have D E I focused trainings and activities that are carried out regularly. A good example of this is from the twenty twenty three All College Day. And we've also had sessions on creating positive and affirming spaces to build L G B T Q I A plus inclusion. There are other examples too, which we elaborate on under one C three. Next slide, please. All right, so that's the last of the statements within criteria one. We'll please be thinking of your questions now. I'll just wrap up briefly if we go to the next slide. As it stands, we are finalizing evidence and working to refine the graph, the draft in advance of the current February twenty ninth deadline that we're working towards. We still have a little bit of time and opportunity to add additional evidence. So if people have ideas or things that we've overlooked, it would be great. Please reach out. You can contact either myself, Paul or Tal about any error of criteria one, and we would be pleased to take your input. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Are there any questions in the audience, in the cards? And there's none in the chat. Thank you, Nick, for that reminder for emails. And thank you, Paul, for your presentation. We appreciate that. We have one question coming in. While that question is coming in, just want to remind everyone, if you have not signed the attendance records, to please do so. Also, just want to remind everyone that we really appreciate your coming out. This is a process. This is a comprehensive evaluation and part of the normal process that's been conducted by H L C. This is a chance for Pima to show what a stellar institution that we are. The town halls will be occurring once a month through April twenty twenty four on rotating days of the week, locations and times. They're posted on our website. Also, just want to thank our faculty and staff for participating and administrators for your work in this effort. We have over thirty five faculty and staff and administrators, and many of them will have been here today, participating in this event. And also, if you have any unanswered questions, we will post them on the college website with responses from the criterion leads. All right, so this is a complaint. I don't know who wants to respond to it. I currently have an open complaint with an Office of Dispute Resolution and addresses some issues made on Criterion one, C one and Criterion one, C two. No, no, either Nick or, yeah. Did you want to respond to that?
I'm not sure as a criterion leads we can respond to that one, but we can certainly make note and follow up about that one afterwards, through the appropriate channels.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Well, with that, we want to thank everyone for being in attendance and for raising your questions. And again, the emails for the Criterion Leads are posted on the slide, and thank you. With that, we are formally ending the session. Thank you.
Welcome, everybody, to our HLC Town Hall. HLC stands for the Higher Learning Commission. That's our accrediting agency that we are preparing for their site visit. So our Town Hall sessions are intended to give members of the community, both internal and external, insight into the report that will be sent to the Higher Learning Commission to show evidence that Pima Community College is meeting expectations set for any institution accredited by the HLC. We thank you for your interest in this process and caring about the education of our community by attending these sessions and providing your feedback. In order to ensure the best Town Hall experience, allowing presenters to answer your questions as well as receive your valuable input, we would like to establish the following expectations. Online attendees, please place your questions in the chat so our moderator can read them to the presenters. In-person attendees, please write your questions on the provided note cards and one of our team members will collect them from you. Please preserve this time for questions that are related to the presented topic and criterion. If you have a specific question, situation, or concern, or complaint, moderators may help you address it outside of the meeting space. Clarification questions are always welcome. And please email the criterion team to discuss any evidence you may have to help our argument be even better. Make sure you sign our attendance records before you leave. And I just want to let you know, this is a comprehensive evaluation and this is part of the normal reaffirmation process. This is our chance to show what an amazing institution we are. These Town Halls are going to occur once a month through April of this year, rotating days and of the week, as well as locations and times. We've had a team of over 35 faculty, staff, and administrators, and many of them have been here and will be here today, sharing the criterion they're working on, as well as what has been accomplished to date. Thank you so much for coming, and I'm going to hand this over to David and Jeff.
Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us today. What follows is only a brief overview of HLC's Criterion II and some examples of the objective, measurable evidence supportive of our assurance argument. I'm not sure if Dr. Parker already went through the differences between different kinds of evidence, but we are looking for that evidence objective. You look at it, and on its face, it shows that we are meeting these things well. We also have some evidence that suggests we're doing them well, and then we have some that indicate we're doing them. And so along the way, when I talk about evidence, we're always looking for that higher level of evidence, and if anybody knows of something beyond what we've already put together, please let us know. Criterion II focuses upon evidence of policies, processes, and expectations that govern the financial, academic, and personnel issues that ensure institutional integrity and ethics. I like to think of it in this setting that ethics isn't the way we normally think, only the way we think of doing the right thing, the right time, the right way, but it's also the concept of structural integrity as well, or structural soundness. The HLC accredits institutions of all types, sizes, and complexity, and it recognizes institutional context and cultural differences in application of its core criteria. This set of criteria applies to every kind of institution, large, small, land grant, private, public, religious. It's how you answer these questions and document that you're meeting these standards in light of the type of institution you are and what your mission is. I don't think we're presenting on it today, but there are assumed practices for each of the areas. This is another thing that Dr. Parker addresses. Many of those are black and white, so there's criteria that you absolutely have to have just to be eligible. And then there's assumed practices that, for the most part, are simple questions. You either have it or you don't, but some of them aren't quite that clear. You have to show how you do it, not just that you're doing it. And then these criterion. And this year, we are addressing all of those assumed practices through a separate group as well. The Criterion II draft was posted for comment. We know that there's areas we still need to strengthen a little bit, but we saw very few comments, so we're continuing to work on that through the end of this month, and then they'll take all five criterion responses and draft that into a single document that just kind of tells the story directly. Criterion II is identified in our 2018 reaffirmation as having some concerns, all of which were identified from the Auditor General's prior year report. So the HLC peer reviewers didn't necessarily find anything when they did their review, but they looked at the Auditor General's report and they said, "Ah, there's something here." It focused upon IT, risk assessment processes, change management, logging and monitoring, contingency planning, standards, and best practices. That was a couple of years after the major cyber breach at Maricopa Community Colleges. And that year, when you look at those reports from most of the community colleges, the same thing is in every one of those. So it was a focus that year, and it was acknowledged in ours, and a lot of work has been done since then, and it's been fully addressed. They do occasionally identify something else. Each time, it is quickly resolved. The most recent example, I haven't seen the one for this year, so I'm speaking about the one for the prior year, was a need to improve the process for reporting related to HERF funds or COVID funds, and that corrective action plan has been implemented. Going to the bottom right, an embedded report will address complaint processes. Process information has been clarified. We have drafted a generic flow chart, understanding that many of the processes have variation to them, but they tend to have some similarities. And we are updating webpages to include crosslinks and a centralized information page. And as complaint processes involve different information systems and sometimes different teams, we are bringing together a team quarterly to evaluate trends, effectiveness of our processes, and how to continually improve based upon that information. I'm not sure that that will always stay within the compliance role. Somebody else may head it up, but we're starting it, and we'll be meeting quarterly until we see if it needs to continue at that rate. Our peer reviewers will also direct, or will also directly address some governance and communication items remaining from the focused visit and interim report. We provided a response. They were very impressed with the response, but they felt that we didn't directly address every one of those specifically, and so the direction to the peer reviewers is, address these while you're there. We're heading that off. We're going back to the draft report and specifically inserting language that addresses each one of these areas. What I put on this slide is just my paraphrase of what the general topic was. You can read those on the accreditation webpage. But this is an area where, when they come, they expect to find evidence consistent with what we've written, or actually showing continuous improvement beyond that. So this isn't a write it up, get it approved, and done. This is a continuing effort all the way through the peer review visit and then beyond. We have strong policy, procedure, guidance, and resource evidence. It tells a good story. It can be more difficult to document that we follow it consistently and that it's effective in practice. So part of this is making sure that our board policies are up to date, our administrative procedures, other standard operating procedures or manuals are kept current. But then, both that we follow those and that we look to show that they're effective. And that showing the effectiveness isn't as easy as just showing a policy that says, "We do this." We then have to show that we do it well, and we follow it, and it works. Some of the evidence that I'll be going through is more bucketed than specific documents. If you look at the draft statements that were posted, you'll actually see and be able to click on all the links to see each one. When you talk to the HLC, they tell us that the subcomponents or the subcriteria are examples of what they're looking for, and that we don't necessarily have to do each one exactly the way it says. As an example, it talks about strategic planning and integrated planning process. Some colleges may not have a strategic plan, but you do the planning and you do it a different way, and you document that. However, when you look at the examples of what they find when they think somebody hasn't met the criteria well, they almost always point to exactly one of those that is written. So for that reason, we're making sure all of those are addressed very well. Criteria 2A, there's five of the subcriteria or core components, and then the areas underneath it. I didn't print this time. Instead, I'm listing the evidence, but I'll read through them very quickly. So the institution establishes and follows policies and processes to ensure fair and ethical behavior on the part of its governing board, administration, faculty, and staff. And the way that they, the ideas they give for that is, the institution develops and the governing board adopts its mission. You just heard a lot from Nick on that, so I don't need to go into it that much further. The institution operates with integrity in its financial, academic, human resources, and ancillary functions, or auxiliary functions. And the policies and the reports are all very clearly displayed. We do a college employee satisfaction survey that helps us make sure that we're recognizing the tone as to whether or not all of those are as effective as possible. And as I pointed out a moment ago, we're going back to some of those places where we're now evaluating, what kinds of trends are we seeing? What complaints are we hearing? As an example, as we continue to roll out more of our compliance program, we may hear more complaints. That's actually a good thing, because now people feel comfortable complaining, they know where to go. It's the content, the substance of the complaints that could be more of an issue. Those ideas on the board are on the slide. Some of them you have already heard from other presentations. Most of this is available on the website. We include external financial and federal compliance audits. And one of the things that we've made very clear this, with the update to the college compliance policy, is that every employee has a duty to report any fraud or abuse of which they suspect or become aware. And we provide whistleblowing processes to do that, and as long as it's done in good faith, even if it's an error, they receive protection for retaliation for that. So those things are all in place. Two B, the institution presents itself clearly and completely to its students and the public, and it talks about, in this area, how we make sure that that information is accurate, not just what we put out, but that it's accurate. So we ensure the accuracy of any representations we make regarding academic offerings, requirements, faculty and staff, and their qualifications, cost to students, governance structure and accreditation relationships, and we're able to support the claims we make regarding contributions to the experience, that they will have the research, community engagement, experiential learning, religious or spiritual purpose and economic development. Obviously, some of that applies to different kinds of institutions. One of the challenges that every institution has, I joke that behind the energy industry, higher ed may be about the second most regulated industry, and that's probably not true. There's probably somebody else, but sometimes it feels like the number of regulations and how quickly they change moves. And so we use different associations and surveillance systems to get updates on those. We're constantly looking for not just what it says, but how to implement it well and make sure that we're current. Some of the things that we do to do that is update our website information, and that's a challenge sometimes. Some of those tend to fall a little bit behind, and we're working on improving that as well. Consumer notifications get updated every year. The tuition and cost information calculators and what's required for each program are on the website. We also, on some of these areas, also put, I guess this would fall more in two C, but when it comes to complaints, if people are not satisfied with our response, or they would rather go directly to a regulator or to another body, we actually place that information so that they can go directly there. And we're building a compliance program which will help support all of this across the institution. Two C actually is the longest of all of them. It has more subpoints than any other, and it almost exclusively relates to the board and how they, they view their role and accomplish their role in the governance part of that. So it's autonomous to make decisions in the best interests of the institution in compliance with board policies and ensure the institution's integrity. So that goes back to my early comments. And the examples are, the governing board is trained and knowledgeable so that it makes informed decisions with respect to the institution's financial and academic policies and practices. The board meets its legal and fiduciary responsibilities. Governing board's deliberations reflect priorities to preserve and enhance the institution. The governing board reviews the reasonable and relevant interests of the institution's internal and external constituencies during its decision-making deliberations. The governing board preserves its independence from undue influence on the part of donors, elected officials, ownership interests and other external parties. And the board, governing board delegates day-to-day management of the institution to the institution's administration and expects the institution's faculty to oversee academic matters. There are several things I'd like to touch on in there, and some of them are on the screen. One is, we're a little unique in how our governing board members come to be. We have public elections by county supervisor district. So there's an element of political race, but it's nonpartisan. In a way, they're elected similar to and function similar to a legislative body such as a city council or a board of supervisors, but they also have the same fiduciary and oversight responsibilities of a corporate board, a board of directors. And in this case, both the HLC and our bylaws have a CEO, our chancellor, who heads up the administrative piece and the day-to-day, and the governing board has the role of whatever statute says they need to do, and then their fiduciary responsibility to the college and their duty of independence from anything else. And part of the reason for the independence here is they're for-profit institutions. They're owned by somebody. How do they make sure that their governing board, their governing board is loyal and the fiduciary duty is to the institution and not the money that goes to the parent company? We have governing board members who are running because of specific reasons, and they're representing specific interests. Those are important that they recognize, and it's also important that they remain information sources and they're independent, but they act as a board for the college. It's not, it's not wrong for people to lobby the board members. That's part of what their role is, to represent their constituency. The model that we include has boards fiduciary and oversight role and delegation and accountability framework for the other, and then their governance role. So as we've seen in some of the meetings over the last number of years, we're trying to find, where does the governance and fiduciary role and oversight lie in comparison to administration and government and day-to-day operations? And that's a line that we're trying to define. I'm not sure we'll ever have a truly bright line, but when you think of what I'd like to see a year or two down the road, is we're really comfortable where that line kind of lies, and we're still trying to figure that piece out, and I think a lot of institutions do. Two D is actually the shortest of all of them. It has no subpoints. It just says what's on the screen. The institution is committed to academic freedom of expression in the pursuit of truth in teaching and learning. Some examples are intellectual freedom and free expression policies and annual reports, our employee handbook and administrative procedures, faculty pedagogical and innovative teaching methods. What I tend to like to think is some artistic license for our faculty, as long as they remain consistent with curriculum and learning outcomes in our deans, discipline committees and representative groups. And the last subpoint is two E. The institution policies and procedures call for responsible acquisition, discovery and application of knowledge by its faculty, staff and students. And the subpoints are, institutions support basic and applied research, institutions supporting basic and applied research, maintain professional standards, provide oversight, ensuring regulatory compliance, ethical behavior and fiscal responsibility. We don't do a lot of applied research, but the same principles apply, and we look for a broader application. The institution provides effective support services to ensure the integrity of its research and scholarly practice conducted by its faculty, staff and students. The institution provides student guidance in the ethics of research and use of information resources, and the institution enforces policies on academic honesty and integrity. So the difference this time is, instead of just listing the headings and the topics, we've tried to include examples of the evidence that we found. Once again, we are trying to incorporate the final edits to the separate five criterion drafts, all by the end of this month on the 29th. And then our writers will take that and turn it into a song, a single narrative, which I view as a challenge, but it also means we won't use nearly as many words, and they'll only hear it once, because you do have a word limit on this, and we want to make sure that we develop our, our story well. As a final thought, Criterion Two is usually one of the easiest to respond to, and that's the shortest part. However, because of recent HLC complaints in this area, and especially Criterion Two C, it will remain a potential area of scrutiny, and it will require a consistent, continuing effort over the next year and beyond. And I really appreciate everybody's time. We do have one more, oh, excuse me, I have a slide just so that you could see what the topics of the assumed practices are. The easiest way to find any of these is just do a Google search or whichever search engine you like. Look for HLC assumed practices or HLC accreditation criteria. It will immediately pop up to that page, and you'll find it. And as I mentioned, we're still refining the work. We're directly addressing the monitoring report items in the reaffirmation argument, and we want to find more objective evidence of effectiveness. We have objective evidence of the policies, those things in place, but how do we document objectively that those are all working well and that we're learning from them and improving? And that's, that's my next focus.
Okay, at this point, we'll open up for questions. Vanessa, would you be willing to come grab your question, if you have one in person? Do we have any online? Going once? I don't think we have any questions. I think you answered.
So I didn't put it on the slide, but if anybody has thoughts they'd like to get to me, my email is dparker8, that's D. Parker and the number eight, at pima.edu. You can also look me up in the directory and give me a call. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much for coming to Criteria Two. We have two more criterias, I believe, and criterions after this. We have Criteria Three and Criteria Four, so these are all the teaching and learning and some good stuff, so hang out and we'll see you soon.
Welcome to the Higher Learning Commission Criterion Three: Teaching and Learning Quality Resources and Support. My name is Rita Lennon and I am the emcee for this criterion. I have a couple of things to share with you. So Town Hall sessions are intended to give members of the community both internal and external insight into the report that will be sent to the Higher Learning Commission to show evidence that Pima Community College is meeting expectations set for any institution accredited by the Higher Learning Commission. I will be saying HLC from here on out. We thank you for your interest in this process and caring about the education of our community by attending these sessions and providing your feedback. In order to ensure the best Town Hall experience, allowing presenters to answer questions as well as receive your valuable input, we would like to establish the following expectations. Online attendees, please place your questions in the chat so that our moderator can read them to the presenters. If you are attending in person, please write the questions on the provided note cards and one of our team members will collect them from you. Please reserve this time for questions that are related to the presented topic and criterion. If you have a specific situation concern complaint, moderators might help you, may help you address it outside of the meeting space. Clarification questions are welcome. Please email the Criterion Team to discuss any evidence you may have. Also, we ask that all visitors, please sign in the attendance records. I've already gone over what HLC means, but I'll say it one more time. So HLC is the Higher Learning Accreditation for Pima Community College. This is a comprehensive evaluation and is part of the normal process that we go through on a regular basis. This is Pima Community College's chance to show what a stellar institution we are by providing evidence. And these will occur once a month, these Town Hall meetings will occur once a month through April 2024, and we are trying to rotate the days and the weeks, locations, and times to fit everyone's schedule. Thank you so much. Okay, I'll turn it on over to you.
Hello, and thank you for being here today. We appreciate you taking some time to listen to some of the work that we've done in regards to Criterion Three, all about teaching and learning quality resources and support as part of the reaffirmation reaccreditation argument submitted to the HLC. Our Criterion Group includes leads Darla Argulara, Jim Craig, Suzanne DeJardin, Emily Halverson Ots, Makyla Hayes, Jeff Tease, and myself, Kelly O'Keefe. Today before you, we have myself, Makyla, and Suzanne to go into the sub-criteria within Criterion Three. Within Criterion Three, there are four sub-criteria, and Makyla Hayes will be going over 3A and 3B with us today. And just so we can go over some of our relevant assumed practices, we have a slide here that you can look at. It's all about things that we're doing at the college that aren't necessarily going to be highlighted today, but if you're so interested, you can go into that as well. And here is Makyla Hayes for Criterion 3A.
Okay, I've got a microphone button, a slides button, and a computer. Let's see if I can do this. Oops, I'm already failing. Okay, so 3A is about the rigor of institutions academic offerings appropriate to higher education. 3A and 3B are all about kind of our content offerings. What are we offering our students and what are their experiences? And then 3C and D are more about the people and spaces that support those offerings. So 3A, I'm going to go over a few of our sub-sub-criterions. So 3A1 is about the courses and programs that are current and require levels of performance by students that are appropriate to their degree. We have a board policy 3.25 that states the board's intention for us to keep updated on those, and our governing board approves our academic programs. We offer micro credentials, certificates, and associates in applied sciences, arts, business, fine arts, and science. And our career and technical education areas, CTE areas, have advisory committees to help them stay on course for their careers. There's also a data portal for CTE to look at to identify opportunity gaps and help focus spending for their Perkins fundings. And a lot of our CTE areas have specialized accreditation. For our transfer areas, we have statewide articulation task forces to help our courses ensure transferability to the university. We also have course equivalency guides for our students to follow, and we ask our students to fill out programs of study to make sure they finish. 3A2 articulates the differences between learning goals for undergraduate, graduate, post-bac, postgraduate, and certificate programs. We don't offer all of those things, but we do offer many of them. Our career and technical education has a curriculum architecture that helps articulate and differentiate these learning goals. And we also have course learning outcomes, program learning outcomes, and general education learning outcomes that all the courses follow through. We design our transfer programs to align with the first two years of a bachelor's degree, and our and our program learning outcomes are listed in the catalog by award. For Three A three, our institution's program quality and learning goals are consistent across all modes of delivery and all locations. This is really important to make sure that if somebody says they took a class at Pima, it doesn't matter how they took that class at Pima, if it's from Pima, we know its quality. So the variety of delivery methods and mechanisms for consistency across our offerings shouldn't make a difference on the quality they receive. Courses and programs go through a review by our discipline faculty committee, our college curriculum council, and curriculum quality improvement office, finalizing with the provost. We have common course learning outcomes and descriptions that are found in the catalog, and we have a syllabus template to help communicate to our students what those expectations are. We did make a note in our argument that we're moving to simple syllabus to try to help streamline some of that process. And that's still being worked out, so we will update as that happens. We did identify some issues with offsite locations. We did not. The HLC identified issues with offsite locations, and the college is writing a report to address those concerns that they had. And we are noting that in our report that we are making sure that our quality is consistent across offerings. Pima Online and the Center for Learning Technology has specific processes they follow to ensure quality online education. And that includes Quality Matters that is headed up by our Learning Management System Manager. We also have dual enrollment processes and a dual enrollment dean, which includes syllabus checks. And we have agreements for our contract and consortium education services. And we have board policies and administrative policies to make sure that those also have high-quality offerings. Okay, that was Three A. So Three B, you still get me. The core component Three B is about offering programs that engage students in collecting and analyzing and communicating information in mastering modes of intellectual inquiry or creative work, and in developing skills adaptable to changing environments. So our first one is that the general education program is appropriate to the mission educational offerings and degree levels of the institution. The institution articulates the purpose, content, and intended learning outcomes of its undergraduate gen ed requirements. As I stated before, we have course learning outcomes, program learning outcomes, and general education learning outcomes that are tied together from bottom to top. And this is actually described in a lot more detail in Criterion Four, so I am going to let that go to Criterion Four. Three B two talks about the framework that we offer our education in. We have a general education curriculum that's communicated in the catalog on the website and in our board policy 3.35, and an AJAC or Arizona General Education Curriculum Framework. Right now, we have three different types of AJACs. There's the AJAC A for liberal arts, B for business, and S for math and science. But that is going through the general education redesign, and they're moving from three AJAC options to just one. The category criteria is going to be aligned with the three state institutions, and those are still being discussed statewide. Our general education learning outcomes are built to align course and program learning outcomes within these gen ed frameworks. Three B three, almost, okay, I thought this was the last one, but I got one more after this. So the education offered by the institution recognizes the human and cultural diversity. We have a 2020, 20, I can't say numbers. I teach math, that's great. Twenty-one to twenty-five strategic plan. We have a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan that requires access, progress, and completion strategies. And going forward, we are going to be integrating our DEI plan into the strategic plan to make sure that that is all part of one plan that we focus on. We have cultural diversity courses, global awareness courses, immigrant and refugee student resource center. We have an international program, adult basic ed. And there are regular updates on diversity, equity, and inclusion goals to the chancellor's leadership and to the board. We also have a teaching and learning center that helps focus on practices that best serve our diverse students. And last of my section. Faculty and students contribute to scholarship, creative work, and the discovery of knowledge to the extent appropriate to their offerings and the institution's mission. We have in our argument several course examples of this. That includes things like our archaeology center. And our science faculty have specific research, undergraduate research opportunities that are kind of systemic through the area. We have provost update celebrations to celebrate the work of faculty and staff. We have an annual design challenge for our students. Our honors program is a wonderful highlight, but we can always use more division-specific evidence and evidence of an ongoing wider-than-one-person type of system. So if you have any of that evidence, please email one of us and we'll make sure it goes into the argument. And I get to pass this off now to Kelly.
Thank you. We're going to review core component Three C. Three C is the institution strives to ensure that the overall composition of its faculty and staff reflects human diversity as appropriate within its mission and for the constituencies it serves. And PCC faculty and staff are more diverse than Pima County, but less than the student population. We have a board policy 2.01 and 2.02 that are informing hiring practices or processes, and the framework for full-time faculty searches and hiring. Based on the best practices for equity and diversity best practices, and the Office of Educational Development, OED, in the Teaching Learning Center, the TLC, the DEI Office offering trainings on belonging. The DEI reports online are showing yearly values and progress over time, and training specifically for Americans with Disability Act, the ADA, the Equal Employment Opportunity, EEO, Title IX, and the initiatives being developed such as deaf awareness, LGBTQIA+, Climate and Pride Index, Black Student Resilience, and Men of Color Programs. Apparently, this button process is a little more difficult than I anticipated. Sorry about that. I can only do one or two things at a time. Three is too much, sorry. So now we're on to Three C two. Three C two is the institution has sufficient numbers and continuity of faculty members to carry out both the classroom and the non-classroom roles of faculty, including oversight of the curriculum and expectations for student performance, assessment of student learning, and the establishment of academic credentials for instructional staff. Faculty allocation Criterion Team is acronymed as FACT. We have a FACT Committee. The Integrated Post-Secondary Education Data System, or the IPADS, will help us in determining needs. And the Expectations of Student Performance, General Education, and Academic Standards Standing Committees. We also have the Assessment of Student Learning, which includes Faculty General Responsibility Policy and Handbook. And the discipline leads help oversee all assessments. A Student Learning Assessment Work Group, also acronymed as SLA, we love our acronyms here, works on faculty and staff collaboration on assessment through the college. And then the academic currency. We have academic policy, which is 3.01, excuse me, administrative policy, 3.0101, follow the HLC guidelines for hiring. And we could use the way of description of systematic way we ensure currency and discipline. So now we're on to Three C three. And Three C three is all instructors are appropriately qualified, including those in dual-credit contractual and consortium offerings. The faculty job descriptions have minimum academic standards and/or work experience credentials for all faculty. And this is a way that we're able to ensure all faculty are qualified for the areas in which they're teaching and their discipline. It's established faculty minimum qualifications rubric is what we're following through the DFC, the Discipline Faculty Committee, approved by the provost, and its board policy 3.01. Three C four. Three C four includes instructors that are evaluating, evaluated regularly in accordance with established institutional policies and procedures. We have goals that are put in a system called My Career Center, and each faculty is required to establish these goals annually. All faculty are evaluated annually in full or in condensed cycles. The full cycle is every three years, and the condensed cycle is every year, and the new faculty is every two years. Regardless of the type of evaluation, though, we have collegial conference and a rubric for supervisors. And adjunct faculty evaluated are being evaluated by department heads, and they were using the adjunct faculty evaluation rubric to do so. Three C five. The institution has processes and resources for assuring that instructors are current in their disciplines and adept in their teaching roles, and it supports their professional development. So we have a policy of faculty general responsibilities for support. We have professional development enrichment funds that are available. Full-time faculty personal funds receive $1,000 per year to put towards professional development. And there you have the ability to accrue up to $5,000 if they don't use their $1,000 each year. Full-time faculty college-wide enrichment funds are available through an application process as well. So if they use their $1,000 and need more, they can apply for more through the college. Adjunct faculty professional development fund money comes from the provost's office. And it's an internal process, it's ongoing and standalone. We have ongoing and standalone trainings as well as workshops, seminars, conferences. And the Teaching and Learning Center offerings are a consistent manner of us receiving more education throughout the year. Tech champions, faculty fellowship is available. And there's also the opportunity for faculty to earn sabbaticals. There's also mini-grants such as the Open Pedagogy in online courses, writing across the curriculum, and sustainability. Three C six is instructors are accessible for student inquiry. And as a faculty member myself, I will tell you that we are always here for students. But full-time office hours are expectations within policy. So that's something that can be, that is included in our assurance argument. The adjunct faculty expectations of availability to students is also written in policy. And adjunct faculty make themselves as available as do the full-time faculty. All instructors have college email addresses, which students use on a regular basis to communicate with us. And we also have office phone numbers so they can call us. And all of this information is available on our standardized syllabi. And I believe this is the last one for Three C. It's Three C seven. Staff members providing student support services such as tutoring, financial aid advising, academic advising, and co-curricular activities are appropriately qualified, trained, and supported in their professional development. So staff professional development funding is also through policy and committee application. Tuition waiver programs are for employees, spouses, and partners and dependents if they want to attend Pima. Specific roles require appropriate educational preparation and attainment. Those performing advising, financial aid advising, tutoring, co-curricular activities, and counseling need the appropriate educational degree attainment in order to do so. The administrative procedure 2.02.01 is all about employment guidelines and the district-wide standards and background checks that are completed. Orientation and onboarding is through the OED, which is... Organ, yeah, OED, yeah, thank you. Organizational effectiveness and development. We have so many acronyms, we don't even know what they mean anymore. No, I'm just kidding. Tina knows. So we also have cross-training for student services in financial aid, advising, records and registration, customer service, co-curricular activities, and weekly training sessions. And we have training for the Title IX Veteran Services, I'm sorry, Title Four, and Veteran Services, and then Title IX, the CLARI annually. And then BP 2.18 and AP 2.18.01, there's two more. BP 5.01 and AP 2.03.01 are all for Title IX. These listed trainings are for student services, tutors, financial aid advisors, academic advisors, counselors, and student engagement teams. So as you can see, we have a lot of opportunity within our college for professional development for not only faculty but also staff, so that we can all serve our students the most appropriately way.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Kelly. So I'm going to finish this off with core component Three D. Core component Three D covers the institution providing support for student learning and effective teaching. There are also four separate sub-criteria. So for Three D one, the institution provides student support services suited to the needs of its student populations. We have developed an academic advising syllabus posted on our website, and we use a model that we have dubbed the Connect, Continue, Complete approach. And what it actually does is takes the student lifecycle and breaks it down into incremental points of time based on the number of credits that they're earning. What are some student learning outcomes that through the academic advising process, we can guide them to be able to accomplish on their own, along with setting expectations as to what they can expect from their academic advisor, from both a service and a guidance perspective. So using that framework, we apply that and have program advising teams that support the guided pathways model. We also have services available for counseling, which does include personal and academic counseling as well as career counseling. We have access and disability services specialists. We have student life, the first-year experience, financial aid, military and veterans advising services, testing centers, library services at five brick-and-mortar campuses, as well as virtual, and Learning Center tutoring, also available in person and virtual. For Three D two, the institution provides for learning support and preparatory instruction to address the academic needs of its students. It has a process for directing entering students to courses and programs for which the students are adequately prepared. So for Three D two, what we referenced as evidence was the developmental education redesign that the college underwent, and a report was published and also linked as evidence on our website in 2019, 2020, which of course was during the pandemic or overlap with the pandemic, which then allowed the developmental education program to be assessed through that lens of how to determine not just modalities, but quality and equity in terms of online and face-to-face offerings, and including support such as checking out of computers and hotspots, technology devices, expanding those offerings, including library services. And additionally, our early alert system, and again, our academic advising case management system with assigned advising and counseling. We utilize a program called Pima Connect in order to streamline those communications and support services. For Three D three, the institution provides academic advising suited to its offerings and the needs of its students. needs of its students. So, as mentioned, we do have a advising model that is an assigned advising model at the point of application based on the student's program of study, and we have two types of advisors, academic advisors, the enrollment advisors and the program advisors. The enrollment advisors focus on new students or prospective students through their first term, and the program advisors and counselors focus on first term all the way through to completion. However, students can connect with either advisor for support and assistance, and warm transfers or handoffs will occur between the teams as students are being served. So, we do provide those services virtually and in person at all of the campuses. We also have ConnectU Orientation as an extension of academic advising year-round, three different modalities, in-person, virtual, live, and asynchronous through a Detol Shell. And the Orientation Program is a requirement for new-to-hire ed, first-time higher education students. We also have all of our staff certified through the Appreciative Advising Institute offered by Florida Atlantic University, and we supplement that out of departmental funds. We also have basic requirements for academic advisors at the point of hire, which you heard Kelly speak to in 3C7, and this is parallel to the credentials that professional faculty must adhere to. So, maintaining advising, academic advising currency, as well as at the onset ensuring the appropriate degree qualifications, background, and training are prevalent throughout. We also have continued education experiences available year-round. Actually, every Friday, we have set aside time to do professional development training. Last, 3D4. The institution provides to its students and instructors the infrastructure and resources necessary to support effective teaching and learning, and this does include technological infrastructure, scientific labs, libraries, performance spaces, clinical practice sites, museum collections, as appropriate to our offerings. And I know we are almost out of time, so I'm going to quickly list some of the evidence. So, our college libraries, our Teaching and Learning Center, our Computer Commons, Makerspaces, our Cyber Warfare Range, our Science Labs, our Health Professions Labs, which include implementing virtual reality, our American Sign Language Labs, Automotive Technology Labs, our Centers of Excellence, our Center for the Arts, and our Archaeology Center. So, where we are at this point is we are continuing to gather evidence and update our draft document through the end of this month, February 29th, and we will continue to focus attention on any areas that we need to bolster evidence. We will continue to look at our draft and any revisions needed, and you may hear from some of us on this team or any of our team members if we need to reach out to you for additional evidence, or if after hearing this presentation, you realize there's evidence you have not sent us forward, please contact any of us on this team. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, so there's plenty of time for no questions. Thank you so much for joining us. Have a great rest of your day.
Today, the town hall sessions are intended to give members of the community both internal and external insight into the report that will be sent to the Higher Learning Commission to show evidence that Pima Community College is meeting expectations set for any institution accredited by the HLC, the Higher Learning Commission. We thank you for your interest in this process and caring about the education of our community by attending these sessions and providing your feedback. In order to ensure the best town hall experience, allowing presenters to answer questions as well as receive your valuable input, we would like to establish the following expectations. Online attendees, please place your questions in the chat so our moderator can read them to the presenters. In-person attendees, please write your questions on the provided note cards and one of our team members will collect them from you. Please reserve this time for questions that are related to the presented topic and criterion. If you have specific situation concern complaint, moderators will help or may help you address it outside of this meeting space. Clarification of questions are welcome and please email the criterion team leads to discuss any evidence that you might have in order to contribute to their criterion. We ask that all visitors sign in and there's attendance records outside of this room and then we also have attendance records online, right? The acronym for Higher Learning Commission is now going to be used as the HLC from here forward. This is a comprehensive evaluation and is part of the normal process. This is Pima Community College's chance to show that a stellar institution we are. This is, the town halls will occur once a month and this is just another one that we're having. We've started these since through to April, April 2024. So we have two more after this one and they're rotating days of the week's locations and different times to accommodate everyone's schedules. We have a team of over 35 faculty, staff and administrators and many of them will be here today to share the criterion they are working on and what has been accomplished to date. I'm going to go ahead and hand over the mic to our criterion leads for criterion group four.
All right, thank you so much. So this is criterion four, teaching and learning, evaluation and improvement. This criterion covers the institution demonstrates responsibility for the quality of its educational programs, learning environments and support services. And it evaluates their effectiveness for student learning through processes designed to promote continuous improvement. Next, we're going to introduce ourselves. I'm Stacy Naughton with CQI Curriculum Quality Improvement.
Lupita Sarano-Villena, also with the CQI team.
Hi, my name is Dominic Dominguez, also with the Office of Curriculum Quality Improvement.
Rita Lennon, faculty.
Elliot Mead, faculty.
Yvonne Perez with the Office of Curriculum Quality Improvement.
Next slide. This is us, next slide, and assumed practices.
We'll go ahead and start off with the assumed practices associated with criterion four. These are determined to be facts and should not vary by institution. Every institution is expected to be in compliance with all assumed practices at all times. So number one, instructors have the authority for the assignment of grades. This falls under our BP 3.4 and AP 3.401. Just to note, the revision to the AP is currently underway and should be, the revised should be available shortly. For number two, the institution refrains from the transcription of credit from other institution or providers that will not apply to its own programs. This will fall under BP 3.21 and the revision is also on the way for the AP for this particular assumed practice. For three and four, the institution has formal and current written agreements for managing any internships and clinical placements included in its programs. Accredited by a relevant accreditor if recognized accreditor exists. This information is currently reflected under the third-party accreditation page of our website. And I also believe the health professions has specific information on the internship and clinical placement for them. For number five, instructors communicate course requirements to students in writing and in a timely manner. And number six, institutional data on assessment of student learning are accurate and address the full range of students who enroll. You'll find this information under the employee handbook, under faculty general responsibilities. And for number six, this will also be under the student learning outcome section of the employee handbook. And lastly, for number seven, institutional data on student retention, persistence and completion are accurate and address the full range of students who enroll. This information is currently available on our Pima site.
All right, criterion four had some previously identified concerns. So in our 2018 assurance argument for assessment, HLC found a concern that we needed greater participation of faculty, a definition for co-curricular and better JLO reviews. Program review is lacking a final decision on the process and there wasn't transparency in the decision. We were cleared of all of these monitoring items in 2020 and since then we've went on to improve upon these processes and build more transparency into them. Next slide.
All righty, so I'll go ahead and speak a little bit more about our 4A. So core component 4A from the HLC is defined on how the institution ensures the quality of its educational offerings. Some of the ways we do so here at our institution is through program review, transfer policies, making sure that we have the authority to oversee our courses, student learning and faculty qualifications, maintaining the accreditation of our programs and by evaluating the success of our graduates. I'd like to speak a little bit on how we're focusing on the improvement of our program review process and what led us to spearhead these improvements by addressing these three questions. Where were we? Prior, we weren't really sure of how program review was happening unless you were currently up for program review. Where do we need to go? We've realized that we needed to grow a more transparent process for those involved in the program review process, for not only those involved but for the entire institution. This includes making decisions that are best for the college and for our community based on the results of our program review. And how do we get there? With standardized processes, consistent communication and support for our existing and developing programs. If we can go to the next slide, please. So some examples of 4A and our PCC success of where we're trying to go. So where we were, we, like I mentioned, we had no clear understanding of our program review process. Conversations on processes in place were siloed and once program review was completed, we didn't really have a great way of tracking progression of that program review. Where we are now is we've created a strategy in the program review process that ties back to Pima's mission along with marketing capabilities to strengthen our programs. Discussions with stakeholders are held so that any improvements including funding realities can be discussed and addressed. We've created and refined our process maps to help identify where roles and responsibilities lie within program review. We've also transitioned from paper and hard copy forms of program review to electronic methods, a way that we can leverage our technology with platforms such as Curriculum and eLumen to help us track program review. And this also helps us with our transparency process as well. And to speak a little bit on where we're going, again, we've standardized our processes and have created consistent communication to ultimately enhance all of our programs here at the institution because everyone will have the same process across the board for program review. Some programs will have different needs and items that need to be addressed, but ultimately program review should be a standardized process with little room for interpretation. We're also using pointed questions now to help create a more holistic approach to tie back to our institution's strategic plans and initiatives. We've also established an after-action program review process to ensure the success of our programs are being measured. So those are some of the ways that we've looked to improve our program review process. Rita, if you would like to add anything about prior or if any of my colleagues would like to chime in on more on 4A, otherwise we're good to move to 4B.
All right, well, I'll get us started talking about 4B and then I'll turn it over to my colleague Yvonne who will wrap it up. I'm just gonna, because I'm sure there's 100 people online, I'm just gonna go on a little bit. 4B is my absolute favorite of all of the core criteria. If I think of, you know, what we're really here to do, which is to be an institute of higher learning, 4B is about how we know that learning is happening. The institution engages in ongoing assessment of student learning as part of its commitment to the educational outcomes of students. So I often say things like, I love learning outcomes and I love assessing them too, to make sure that we're really living up to our promise that we make to our students. So for 4B, a lot of the things that are covered under this category are processes for assessing student learning. How do we do that in a systematic way at our college? What are the goals in our academic, what are the learning goals in our academic and co-curricular offerings? And then what are the processes and methodologies to assess student learning? And what is the participation of faculty and staff in that? So, you know, similar to where we were with other kinds of program assessment as Dom was just talking about, we had some siloed conversations and we had some lacking consistency in our processes and our practices. So Dom mentioned that we moved from a paper process to Curriculum and eLumen. I hear of stories, I love them, where, you know, folks will say, hey, I was cleaning out my office and I found a box of slows and papers that, you know, and how those old processes used to work. So we were lacking consistency, we're moving forward, where do we need to go is a strategy that includes our mission. And we need to get there by being collaborative and really creating that standard process. So Yvonne's gonna talk a little bit about how we've been doing that.
So as Elliot mentioned, right, there wasn't really a clear process of how the assessment was conducted. And something very important too was making the assessment process meaningful, right? So we didn't want to just have processes just for the sake of having them. There has to be some meaning and a benefit to the different programs participating in these processes. So one of these processes we have is the annual assessment. So this is an opportunity for the disciplines to look at the course learning outcome, program learning outcomes, general education learning outcomes. So disciplines look at the courses and they can identify how students are performing. Are they meeting the expected levels of achievement, exceeding or maybe not meeting those levels of achievement? And then if they are not, what are the strategies that can be implemented in the classroom to help students succeed, right? So also as part of the annual assessment, it's a process called closing the loop. So what this is, because the annual assessment is something that occurs every year, the disciplines have the opportunity to look at the information that was presented the year before, look at the strategies they have, the data that they had, and now look at the new data and see if there's any improvement in the students. And see like did the strategies that we said we would implement, are they working or are they not, right? So the annual assessment is an opportunity for reflection for that. Now on the side of co-curricular assessment, we know that there are many co-curricular activities already happening at the college. So what we're looking right now is we want to really identify what those activities are and we want to create a systematic approach to assessing these activities. But having this assessment be in connection with the general education learning outcomes, the strategic plan and the college initiatives. So ultimately, like, we really want to see a connection between our co-curricular and curricular assessments. We want to see how they can support each other, give each other, for the improvement of the students, right? Examining the general education learning outcomes with the general education changes in mind. And really, we want to look at our data, the assessment process in a holistic way. So we know we have co-curricular assessment, we have curricular and not just through the course learning outcome, program learning outcomes and general education learning outcome, but also student success data, right? So looking at all this data holistically is going to help us identify what are the opportunities for improvement that we have and this is going to help us make better informed decisions.
All right, 4C. So this has to do with how we set goals here at an institution for our persistence, retention and completion. So one thing we are really good at here at Pima Community College is gathering data and that is where we were. We will send out a survey for just about anything and David Donderwitz can't be with us today, but like he always says, you will probably get a survey from today's session. So one thing that we are not so good at is using that information to make meaningful changes. So we need to tie these types of surveys and the feedback that we receive to our funding and our strategic initiatives. Next slide. One way that we can do this is through Pima Connect. This is a tool that's currently being used. We've heard from our students and they've told us that they feel more successful when they feel connected. So one thing that we can do to improve on this system is to create data points, data areas where we are building in automation to connect with our students. Not just connecting to an advisor but to their faculty and other community areas. All right, next slide. All right, so where are we at right now with criterion four? We have finished up our draft. It's been posted on the Pima website, so we are done with that. And we, anything else that criterion four has been doing? Anything else we need? No? Awesome. Any questions for criterion four? Nothing online? Great, with that, thank you so much for letting us present today and share some of the work that we've been doing.
16 minutes.